Welcome everyone to the On Poly Podcast. I'm Steve Paken.
And I'm John Michael McGrath.
Today on the pod, the education minister is laying down the law with school boards he says have been wasting taxpayer dollars.
Have Donald Trump's tariffs encouraged Doug Ford to create some new east-west electricity possibilities?
And the province and its doctors have sealed a deal to increase pay for M Ds and help better serve rural areas.
And in your column, my column, I will look at an idea Ontario is borrowing from 1980s Communist China.
And my column focuses on a pretty good current affairs program that is going off the air after 19 years. You may have heard of it. It's called The Agenda.
I've heard something about the host. It's April 25th, 2025. So let's get to it.
JMM.
Sir.
A little sugar to start with as always. No surprise about the T-shirt I'm wearing this week. There was a bit of news. I don't know if you heard it.
Yes, I had heard. Should we just draw it out here that you will not be returning to the agenda at the end of this season?
Well, we decided, you know, I'm coming to the end of a three-year contract and we decided nearly three years ago when I signed the contract that this would be, this would be the last one for The Agenda, which will finish its 19th season on the air at the end of June. And by any stretch, I mean, that's a pretty good run.
Yes.
So I do remember.
Those are Cheers numbers.
Well, I do remember, I wrote column, we'll talk about it later when I do your column, my column, but Barbara Frum, of course, legend in broadcast journalism, told me, I guess about 35 years ago, this is when I was still at CBC, she said, you know, Steve, someday people are going to wake up and they're just going to get sick of seeing your face. And I've always had that in the back of my mind. So I thought, you know what? Let's pull the plug on this thing before, you know, before they get sick of my face. But we're going to continue doing this.
Yes. Importantly for our audience, the podcast will continue. You are going to stick around for some reason. You don't hate the sight of my face every week.
I love the sight of your face. Once a week. I can handle you once a week. That's great. Yeah. So we'll do that. That's great. Now, it's springtime, eh? Beautiful weather today.
Yes.
Beautiful, actually beautiful weather most of the week.
Yep.
I walk to work. You bike to work?
Yes, I bike to work.
You cycle to work?
Yes.
Do you, do you use the bike lanes by chance?
I do use bike lanes in this city, not the ones that have attracted the ire of the province.
Well, it's funny. This is the story that just, what do we say? Either refuses to die or keeps on giving, depending on your point of view here, because the bike lanes are back in the news again, thanks to the courts. What's happened?
Right. So Justice Paul Shabas, who heard the full arguments in the case to preserve the bike lanes earlier this month, has issued an injunction. This may confuse our listeners a little bit because of course, there was a previous argument for an injunction where the, that judge made an opposite decision. He said that there would be no injunction. Justice Shabas now, with having heard the full arguments, is deciding to put that injunction in place.
So what does this practically mean? Do we have a stay of execution for the bike lanes now?
No, not, well, in a sense, we've got a very temporary stay, right? This injunction will apply until Justice Shabas can issue his final decision. All this does really is press pause. We're not going to go too deep into this because we're just doing the intro here. But in his decision, Justice Shabas went some lengths to really emphasize that he has not made any final decision yet. But he thought that having heard the, the, the arguments presented by both the charter applicants and the government, or in this case, I guess the defendant or whatever, that it was appropriate to impose an injunction. We shouldn't really draw any, any inference from the fact that there was an injunction. We don't know what final decision he will make, but I do have to say, he did not seem terribly impressed with the quality of argument and evidence provided by the province. I'm just going to briefly quote the injunction here where Justice Shabas says, "The evidence led by the government does not provide a compelling basis to find that the removal of these protected bike lanes will improve safety, nor does it rebut the government's own internal advice that accidents and injuries are likely to increase." That of course is relevant in the question of the injunction because the whole point of an injunction is, is who is going to be harmed most if we apply an injunction? So as a cyclist, I am not getting my hopes up yet, but I did not mind reading that passage at all.
But as you point out, that doesn't necessarily give any indication of what the final decision is going to be.
No. And so just to give people a bit of a reminder of what this argument is about, right? The government has determined that it is in the public interest to remove particular bike lanes in the city of Toronto because of the need to fight traffic congestion. Nobody denies that traffic congestion is an issue in the city. The government has not even, as you can see from that passage I read out, the government has not even rebutted the proposition that removing those bike lanes will cause some amount of harm. The government is actually allowed to cause harm. Governments make decisions every single day that cause people harm, but they are required to demonstrate that, you know, they have weighed policy choices against other available alternatives. This is all part of a process that they have to prove in court. And this is why I'm relying so much on the, the judge's opinion about the quality of evidence and argument here, because the government is really struggling to meet this bar of having proved that it did the necessary homework to justify infringing people's right to security of the person under section seven of the Charter.
Bottom line, we're going to be talking about this again, aren't we?
Oh, it's, it's going to come back at least once more when the final decision from Justice Shabas comes in. And then, do you think there might be an appeal?
I think depending on which way it goes, it could very well be an appeal. I think you're right about that. Okay. With that, let's get off to issue one. Education Minister Paul Calandra has announced that several school boards are being investigated over their finances and use of resources. And in one case, the province is taking control. Okay. We got a few of them here. So let's go through them one by one. Take us through it.
So we've got the Thames Valley District School Board. It's in the London area. They're being investigated for its, for the use of funds for a three-day retreat that members stayed at the, we refer to it as the Skydome Hotel. Technically, it's actually a Marriott. But I mean, old heads still refer to it as the Skydome.
Absolutely.
The, the government noted that the board has actually been running a deficit and has had to cut back on services to students. Not a great look to be having a three-day retreat while you're cutting back on student services. So in that case, because of the long-running deficits that have been projected, the province is taking control of the board. Technically speaking, they are appointing a supervisor which will have the power to make decisions that would otherwise be made by the board. Then we have, and our audience may remember this story, the Brant-Haldeman Norfolk Catholic District School Board. They got into hot water last year where four trustees incurred almost $150,000 in costs related to a trip to Italy where they bought art for the board. Some of those were the direct costs of the trip. And then there were also costs when they hired the crisis management firm Navigator and also billed the board for that. Although that was a more expensive trip, Brant-Haldeman Norfolk Catholic District School Board is not in the same financial distress. And so they are not having a supervisor appointed yet. But Minister Calandra did say at his availability this week that he is not exactly going to be shy about using the powers that are available to him. If, how to put this, if school boards don't straighten up and fly right. The ministry is also appointing financial investigators. Now, these are not going to be supervisors in the same way that other boards are seeing. But they are appointing financial investigators to the Ottawa Carlton District School Board, the Toronto Catholic District School Board and the Toronto District School Board, the Public School Board in Toronto, to validate their financial positions and recommend whether a control and charge of the board should be vested in the ministry.
This is getting sticky. And usually when things get sticky, there's somebody somewhere on a back bench that says, why don't we just get rid of school boards altogether? I don't hear that yet.
No.
But it wouldn't shock me if it came forward soon.
And this is a move that we've seen in other provinces where, in fact, it's kind of gone back and forth sometimes where, you know, one government will dissolve school boards and then the process never quite gets all the way there before the next election. And then a new government comes in and reassembles the school boards. I'm not sure exactly. I've kind of lost track of where it all stands in the other provinces. But yes, that is an issue that, that comes up perennially. No, no sign of that yet from the government. At the moment, they seem to believe that they can deal with these issues with the tools that they have at hand.
Right. Now, there was another report attached to all of this as well. Take us through that.
Right. So our audience may recall, last year, there was a rally to support the Indigenous people of the Grassineroos First Nation. And some Toronto District School Boards participated in that. It did not stay confined to Indigenous issues. There was a pro-Palestinian speaker at that rally and it became controversial because of some statements that were made from the rally stage that, that were read as being anti-Israel. Ministry ordered a report to be made. That report has now been made public. And just to go through some of the findings of fact that the investigator made, he says that for five minutes, there were pro-Palestinian chants at the event that made some Jewish students feel emotionally unsafe. The report distinguishes between being made emotionally unsafe versus feeling physically endangered. The investigator also found no evidence that students were forced to participate in the event and said that media reports about what color children were asked to wear was misleading. There were reports about children being called settlers and being forced to wear blue. Perhaps the most important element in the report cited by the minister, again, in his remarks this week, was that participating schools failed to comply with the TDSB's own internal policies regarding these kinds of events. And if they had complied with their own policies, that some of these issues would have been addressed in advance. The report does also reassert perhaps that there is significant value in students learning about politics, learning about the world from attending these kinds of rallies. And obviously the scandal that is the mercury poisoning around the Grassineroos First Nation is, is an important and vital issue for people to understand, not just Toronto District School Board students. But the report does note that, you know, this also harmed not just Jewish and Palestinian students, but also the interests of Indigenous people because it got wrapped up in all of this stuff. The report concludes that teachers and principals need to be better at anticipating the risks from these kinds of rallies and potential safety concerns for students at events like this. I'm only scratching the surface of the report here for the interest of time. We are going to post a link to the report in the podcast show notes.
Good. So people can find out more about it there.
Yes.
And with that, let's move on to issue two. By the year 2050, Ontario will need 75% more electricity than it uses right now. 75%. That's a big number. The independent electricity systems operator, which is in charge of managing our system here in Ontario, is working on procuring that energy and the Protect Ontario Through Free Trade Within Canada Act could open that procurement process to other provinces. Okay. JMM, why don't you take us through what some of the advocacy groups out there are hoping the province of Ontario will do?
Right. So I'm not going to reread the, the title of that legislation.
Thank goodness.
I'm just going to call it Bill Two. But so this is a reaction to Bill Two from the Ontario Clean Air Alliance. They sent out a press release making the argument for expanding east-west electricity ties between Ontario and other provinces.
Which is a hobby horse of theirs going back probably 20 years. They've been on this one for a long time.
Yes. They, they've been arguing for a very long time that, for example, Ontario could import more electricity from Quebec and Manitoba instead of building new large nuclear plants. Currently, if you'll allow the pun, Ontario can import about 250 megawatts from Manitoba and 2,000 megawatts from Quebec. The Clean Air Alliance argues that transmission system upgrades between our three provinces could allow for 2,000 more megawatts to help with increasing electricity demand.
Okay. Well, this presumably, I know for, for the Clean Air Alliance, this is a whole nation-building thing. We should be looking at more east-west links as opposed to north-south links. So how does that play into all this?
So at the moment, all three major national party leaders have called for various forms of an interprovincial energy trade, right? Mark Carney, the Liberal leader, and NDP leader Jagmeet Singh have explicitly called for an east-west electricity grid. And Conservative leader Pierre Poliev has the idea of a broader sort of national corridor that would move not just electricity, but also oil and gas across the country. But this is tricky because electricity really is provincial jurisdiction. And while the federal government has powers to build works between the provinces, provinces have been pretty, they've guarded their electricity systems pretty jealously historically. You know, they prefer, as Ontario is doing with nuclear power right now, they prefer to generate their electricity locally rather than rely on imports from other jurisdictions, even if those are other jurisdictions in Canada. There is also a geography problem here that I do want to mention where, you know, like the bulk of Ontario's population is in the, you know, the, the south. And it's a really long distance between, say, like the GTA and the Manitoba border, right? That's certainly thousands of kilometers, right? So we're talking about a very, very long transmission line that would need to cover a lot of distance where there's not a ton of other very large load centers, which doesn't make it impossible, but it, I'm sure an electrical engineer could give you a better answer than I could. So those are just some of the potential problems with this idea.
This, can I, can I take us down memory lane for a second here?
Sure.
Because this is not, I mean, there's nothing new under the sun. This is not a new issue. And I can remember how far back, well, more than 40 years ago anyway. And here comes the reference, if we're playing our drinking game, when Bill Davis was Premier of Ontario. I remember a time when the hydroelectric station at Atticocan needed a significant upgrade. And the Premier of Manitoba said to Bill Davis, you know, you could just do a transmission line from Manitoba to Northwestern Ontario and take care of things that way. And you wouldn't have to spend any money fixing your hydroelectric plant at Atticocan. And Mr. Davis apparently responded by saying, there's no votes in that for my party if I do that, right? You know, there's jobs, there's jobs. If I refurbish that station in Northwestern Ontario, there's jobs there that will not happen if I give you guys the contract. So that's all been part of this story, obviously for many, many years. That said, if we do create these east-west links to other provinces, Manitoba and Quebec in this case, does that solve the 75% problem we talked about off the top where we obviously need a lot more power going forward?
Not really. Remember a few weeks back, God, what is time even? Premier Doug Ford threatening to cut off American electricity imports.
With a smile on his face, as I recall.
Yes, exactly. One of the things that I mentioned when we were talking about that is that actually Ontario and Quebec don't export that much electricity to the U.S. anymore. And there's been a huge increase in demand in Quebec for electricity. Premier Lugo has been very happy about the amount of industry he's been able to attract to the province. But it has meant that there's a lot more electricity being used in Quebec and a lot less being exported out of it. So I'm not even sure if the 2,000 megawatts number that the Clean Air Alliance cites is, is necessarily realistic. But even if we take that as a given, you know, what we're talking about in terms of, you know, 75% increase in demand, that 2,000 megawatts would be a relatively small part of that. Now, there might still be some benefit because maybe we can build the transmission line faster than we can build a new large nuclear plant. And so it might be beneficial in the nearer term, for example, if we have a particularly hot summer that, you know, when everybody's air conditioners turn on, maybe that helps keep the lights on as well. But in the long term, I, I think the answer is going to need to be some very large increase in either electricity generation here in Ontario. Or I mean, there's not a ton of very large hydroelectric potential left in Ontario, but there are still some sites in Quebec and in Manitoba that might be explored. But that's, again, you know, you just look at how long it's taken to build like the Site C Dam in British Columbia. We don't build hydroelectric dams very quickly either. So it is a longer-term project. And obviously this particular government, the Ford government at the moment, is, is really looking very much at like large nuclear here in Ontario.
Well, and I think you've got to give Donald Trump some credit on this one too, because for years and years and years, people have told the Clean Air Alliance, we're not interested in spending the money to build transmission lines from Quebec to Ontario to get their power, because it's cheaper just to either do it here or get it from the States or whatever. But given our deteriorating relationship with the United States, suddenly building these east-west links not only might be a nice nation-building exercise, but it might make more financial sense as well. So let's explore.
Absolutely worth exploring.
There you go. And with that, we're off to issue three. The government of Ontario and the Ontario Medical Association have reached a new agreement that will boost healthcare access in the northern and rural communities. Okay, JMM, take us through it.
Right. So we talked about the crisis in rural healthcare with Nam Kiwunuka, the host of the thread here, a few episodes ago. 2.5 million people in Ontario do not have a family doctor and the situation is far worse if you are living in a rural community, particularly if you need a specialist who, whose only office is in a, a major city that might be hours away by car. So the agreement announced this week will help direct funds towards what is being called a Rural and Northern Physician Group Primary Care Model. That is going to help recruit doctors specifically to northern and rural communities. There's also a new program that will ensure appropriate staffing levels year-round at ERs. We've talked a lot on this podcast about the problem of ER closures. In some cases, it's only temporary. And in some cases, there have been permanent ER closures that have plagued rural communities all over the province. We've got the Auditor General Report did quite a bit of an exploration on this issue. All of these announcements are part of an arbitrated agreement between the OMA and the province. And just to give our audience a bit of the background here, the Ontario Medical Association acts like a kind of a bargaining agent for doctors.
They're a union. They don't want to be called a union, but they're a union.
Functionally, yes. And so these announcements were made in concert with the latest compensation increases that were agreed to by the, the OMA and the government or rather arbitrated. You know, the OMA also put out a release saying, you know, they're very happy with these announcements, both of course, because their members are seeing compensation increases and they will benefit from this, but also because, you know, like doctors want to help sick people and they, they are not happy with the current crisis either.
And we need more doctors. This good announcement notwithstanding, we do need more doctors in Ontario. Anything more on that?
There is a call for proposals right now on connecting 300,000 people in underserved communities to primary care teams. The province will be spending a little more than $200 million to do this. The idea is to get family doctors, nurse practitioners, healthcare organizations together to form groups that can help a wider community. So not so much relying on the sort of, the, the idea of like a, a single general practitioner working out of their own office, but, you know, having a more fully formed team. This is one of the recommendations, part of the Primary Care Action Plan that was announced by Dr. Jane Philpott.
Gotcha. Okay. And with that, let's move on to your column, my column. Time now for our regular feature, Your Column, My Column, in which JMM and I have a little chat about the columns we wrote for the website tv.org over the past week. And what will you favor us with today?
So the government introduced Bill Five just last week. And it's another one of these Protect Ontario bills, but I'm just going to call it Bill Five. And it has a bunch of different chapters, but one of the parts of the bill allows the government to create what they're calling special economic zones, where the Minister of Economic Development, Jobs, Job Creation and Trade, currently Vic Fidelli, would have the power to basically carve out a space in Ontario where there's some provincial priority, some big project that they want to, to get done. And they would basically be allowed to exempt it from most laws and regulations. So if you think of, just to give our, our audience a bit of an example of what this might mean, if you think of that VW battery plant that is going up in St. Thomas, that was an enormous priority for the government. And they actually like redrew municipal boundary lines to make it easy to do. And so I, I think that when we talk about this kind of power, they are thinking about projects like that where, you know, every once in a while, you just need somebody to come in and, you know, wave a broadsword through all of the red tape and, and get something done like that. But this is a much bigger idea that a lot of different people are talking about in, in different ways. And in the, the whole, the, the title, the name, Special Economic Zones, you know, arguably goes back at least to Communist China in the 1980s where Deng Xiaoping, then the leader of China, you know, understood that you could not throw out the entire system of, of government that had grown up in Communist China. But he wanted to find ways to allow a little bit more capitalist experimentation within the system. So they picked a handful of cities, most notably Shenzhen, which is now like the, the center of, you know, iPhone manufacturing and a whole lot else in China. And created these small little pockets where they were allowed to, to do more experimentation. And, and that system eventually grew and they, they, you know, would look at ideas that worked in these special economic zones and, and apply them more broadly. The bill that they are presenting, that has not been passed by the legislature yet. You know, in theory, you could imagine the government using their powers in this same way, right? Like allowing different cities across the province, you know, we've, we talk a lot about the difference between northern Ontario and southern Ontario. And maybe, you know, Sudbury wants to try something different that it can't currently because it's governed by the same laws that govern municipalities in both the north and south, as a for example. In theory, this government could get really ambitious and experimental and, and, you know, do lots of interesting things. I will say, I conclude in the column, I, I don't believe that's where they're going to go with this, just because if you look at Peel Region, where they talked about making a lot of big changes and then they backed off because it was politically contentious. And then we're still waiting a year later to find out what they're going to do with the water system in that city because there was, they're supposed to do something and we don't know what it is. I, I am not, I'm not expecting a ton of wild disruptive experimentation.
But should I wait for the headline on your next column, which says Ford Government Takes Page Out of Communist China's Playbook?
Doug Ford's Great Leap Forward Coming to Ontario.
The Cultural Revolution can't be far behind.
And what did you write about this?
Well, I guess we sort of broke the news in the column that I wrote this week, that this will be the final season for The Agenda, 19 seasons. We started this program in 2006. And the shirt I'm wearing today, this T-shirt, on the back of it, which we can get a shot of, let me see, let me turn it around there. Anyway, that was our first grand world tour. Well, we can't call it a world tour anyway. It was more like a, around the province of Ontario tour. But anyway, we took the program on the road. We've done, I don't know how many programs we've done. I should have, I should have figured it out. But if you figure it's about 250 shows a year and we've been on the air 19 years, do the math and it's quite a few. Anyway, I love that story about Barbara Frum saying to me all those years ago, you know, you gotta pull the plug before they get sick of looking at your face. And I've just been thinking, it's, it's a good time to, to bring that show to an end after a, I think, a pretty good, solid 19-year run. We will continue to do the On Poly Podcast here, which I'm thrilled about. I will continue to write a weekly column for TVO, which I'm thrilled about. There's another program called TVO Today Live, which is kind of a town hall program I do every six or eight weeks or so. Going to continue that. And Ontario Chronicle, which is sort of these five-minute YouTube blasts that look back fondly at moments in Ontario political history. Going to continue to do that. But that's just a part-time job, believe it or not, for me.
This was. I was going to say, your idea of retirement is still very busy.
Well, it's, it's not retirement, it's rewirement. But that's, that's going to be, you know, part of my life. And then I'm also going to have a chance now to do some other projects that, that you simply can't do when you're hosting a daily program because you're up till 11 o'clock the night before studying your, your notes for the next day. So going to have a chance to do that going forward. But I'm, I mean, let's, let's, let's not bury the lead here. I'm really thrilled that you and I are going to continue to do this, which we've done for, I guess, five years or so together. Is it five years?
Yeah, five or six.
Something like that. Yeah. So this podcast, certainly since we started putting it on TVO, on television, has really gained in popularity and it will continue to be that because there's a new program coming at some point in the fall, which will replace The Agenda. But it's going to be a four nights a week program and The Agenda, excuse me, The On Poly Podcast will still be on television Friday nights. And of course, available in your podcast feed, whatever that is. So that's all of that. That's what my column's about this weekend. There's a couple of cute stories in there as well.
In, in your column, you said that, you know, there's, there's items on your bucket list you want to tackle. I won't ask you to, to divulge too many secrets, but any, any particular one item on your bucket list you want to share?
No, I'm going to. No, no, you know what? Because nothing, nothing's nailed down yet. I'm obviously, I'm, I've now got to, you know, start thinking about what else is going to, what else on that bucket list I think I can tackle. So that's going to be the plan this summer. And in the meantime, we want to finish strong on The Agenda. So we'll do that.
Okay.
Now, if you've got a burning question or insightful comment, we always love hearing from you at onpolitics@tv.org. JMM, what's the letter this week?
We have an email from listener John Towndro in Cornwall, who writes, "Hi Steve and JMM. I've been canvassing door to door for a local candidate and my experience is worth sharing. A few people are friendly and ask questions. Fewer people thank me for doing the canvassing in the rain. Many do not even answer the door, even though it's clear they are home. Some say it's not worth voting, which is disturbing. What I found most disturbing is that some people are downright nasty, especially if they don't like the party I'm canvassing for. I came away worried that people have lost the ability to be polite or even social. Perhaps this has been exacerbated by the pandemic, but I also suspect it is because as a society, we have become too isolated. I think this is worth talking about. John Towndro, Cornwall, Ontario."
John, I agree it's worth talking about. And I have to say, for what it's worth, I think your experience is not the majority experience. I talk to candidates all the time about the experiences they get at the door. And to be sure, there are the odd case where somebody, a constituent, a potential constituent is incredibly rude or aggressive, et cetera, et cetera. But just the other day, I got an email from a candidate, well, I'll, I'll mention his name. His name's Greg Brady. He's running for the Conservatives in Age Acts against Jennifer McKelvey for the Liberals. And Greg says, you know, Greg is a morning radio host. That's what he left doing to run for office. And he said, you know, he probably will knock on 30,000 doors by the time this election campaign's over. And he said, "It's really restored my faith in democracy. My interactions with the public are really quite constructive and engaging and inspiring even. And, you know, however the election turns out for him," he said, "he was really glad he did it." And I have to tell you, over the years, that is the overwhelming response I get from people who run for office is that they learn a lot, they meet a lot of people. And at the end of the day, yes, of course, there are some bad moments.
Yes.
But in the main, it's well worth doing.
Yeah. I suspect I don't have to make this point to our audience, but you know, if you're going to get crotchety with people on your porch, and I can understand that, like, you know, having strangers knock on your door at maybe not the best time of the day, it can be irritating, don't get crotchety with the canvassers. Like, if the candidate is on your street and is, you know, talking to people on their doorstep, and you want to give them an earful, you know, I would still urge you to be polite, but the candidate, at least, I think, is fairer game. The canvassers are just, they're literally volunteering.
Nice volunteers, just trying to contribute to democracy, yes.
Yeah. You know, I think oftentimes canvassing isn't really going to convince people to switch their vote. Sometimes, you do hear about times where people change their minds, but it is reminding voters who, you know, they've already been identified by that party as they are potentially winnable vote. Sometimes you're literally just reminding them that there's an election on. And, you know, it is, they are part of the process, too, right? Canvassers are people, even if they are paid, and I think it's quite rare for them to be paid canvassers. But yeah, it never hurts to be decent and kind.
Amen to that. Give the email address, and let's get out of here.
That's right. Once again, if you'd like to ask about the content of our show, please email us at onpolitics@tv-o.org.
There we go. And that is the On Poly Podcast for this Friday, April 25th, 2025.
You can follow our show on Apple Podcasts so that you get notified each time a new episode is available. And you can see the video version of the podcast on the TVO Today YouTube channel.
Any feedback you have, we're always happy to hear it, good, bad, or indifferent. Write us an email at onpolitics@tv-o.org, and please include your first and last name and where you're from.
This week's episode was produced and edited by Matthew O'Meara. Video editing by Colin Kish.
Production support from Jonathan Halliwell and TVO's digital media services team.
Our managing editor is Katie O'Connor. Laurie Few is the executive producer of digital. John Ferry is vice president, programming and content.
Want to thank our crew for making the video podcast look so darn good? Where's Tony Burke? Tony Burke's back there. Let's give him a little shout out.